Call to order, the Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, Lake Mills City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Okay. And all who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to item number four, corrections and/or approval of the city council minutes of November 19th. Do I have a motion?
So will.
To. What's your motion to do what?
Prove the minutes.
Okay, prove the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any additions or corrections on the minutes from that night? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Abstained.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 4-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, correspondence, who would like to start on that one?
I think we all got the same email. Believe it went to everybody from Mr. Peter Wyman about the Fayetteville Park putting in the sidewalk through it. And he has put out a few items that shows he thinks there's better ways to spend the money than putting a sidewalk through the park. So if you haven't read it, that came in yesterday. I believe it went to everybody.
I also received that email and two others that were essentially saying the same thing or suggesting that if we're going to do sidewalk, do it on Highway V. And also I received a phone call this evening with the same concerns.
I also had a phone call from a person who was lobbying for the sidewalk along County Drunk V and not through the center of the park.
I did the same. I received two emails and two phone calls, and everybody wants to have us push towards putting a sidewalk along V instead of through the park.
I also, I did have the correspondence that you mentioned, but I did have some other correspondence as well. I had several people since the last meeting when they found out that we weren't going to have Christmas lights on Main Street. And everyone that I talked to wanted to know if we could still put up Christmas lights on the other streets, even though we aren't able to do it on Main Street, being Lake Street, Madison Street. I don't know if we have the brackets on Water Street, but they were hoping that even though it would be a small thing, that we could put up some Christmas lights in the downtown area. Maybe, I don't know if we have the wherewithal to put any of the lights on north, Main Street, north of the gas station. I don't know if we have that. We don't at this time, right? Okay, but we do have a-
Historically, they were those aluminum poles downtown.
Okay. And we do have a few of those aluminum poles still on other streets other than Main Street.
Yeah.
That-
There are maybe like five.
Okay. Well, consensus of the people that spoke to me understood it would be a small number, but they would like to have what we can put up, put up. Not that it's a big deal, but they thought it would help make the downtown look a little more festive. So I wanted to bring that up so that staff and council could hear that. Okay? Any other correspondence on any other topics? Seeing nothing else? Okay, we'll move on to item number six, questions and public comment. Already here. "The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. A public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium." So, I see we do have a few people in the audience tonight. Anyone who would like to speak on any topic that's on the agenda and/or if you spoke to our, you didn't get anyone coming to talk to you about other, okay. So it would be just items on the agenda, you can approach the podium. Give your name and address, please, and then you have, I think it's three minutes, right? And we'll go from there.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Lair. I live at 390 Wakeman Circle. I am a resident that's in close proximity to Fayetteville Park. I am a recreational therapist, and I've worked with many children with special needs. I would love to see the park become accessible to all residents. I know that that was a listed concern, but I believe it should be done in the right order. We should be fixing up the park and making it compliant with ADA code before we assess additional access points to the park. When we have finalized the plans and secured funding, then I believe it would be an appropriate time to reevaluate. In the park's current state, I do believe that there is a greater need for a sidewalk along Highway V and going down into the parking lot. There are residents in that new apartment complex off of Brewster and also residents living in Brookstone that cannot safely access the park because they have to walk along County Road V. Throughout the summer, I did randomly survey people who were walking through the field because our backyard is adjacent to it. I would run out to them and I would ask them, random survey, and I would say about seven of eight people thought that it was not necessary to have a sidewalk, and walking through the field was not deterring them from coming to the park. And everyone that I surveyed said that the money would be better spent improving the park facilities. They thought that the long sidewalk going through was a waste of funds. Putting the sidewalk through the field would help with convenience, whereas a sidewalk along Highway V would help with safety. That is why I feel it is more important for that County Road V to receive the sidewalk. I would also like to bring up the maintenance of the proposed sidewalk. This summer, I did call and speak with Rob when I asked him who would maintain the sidewalk. He told me no one. He said that the sidewalk would not need to be maintained because no one would be accessing the park in the winter. However, that is a sledding hill that is commonly used, and if someone were to slip and fall on the sidewalk and fall onto my property, then I would be at fault. So I believe that we do need to have a maintenance plan. Otherwise, I don't believe that it is wise to put a lot of money and effort into something we have no plans on maintaining. Lastly, I just want to briefly touch on the safety of the proposed sidewalk. I would like to know if there will be lights put up to light the area for walking at night. The park may close at night, but it is a public sidewalk, and we can't necessarily kick people off. And I am a little afraid that it will be an easy access point for a car to park in that parking lot and then vandalize or cause crime through the neighborhood and then race back to his car and drive along Highway V. It just seems like an easy access point to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I have one question.
Yeah.
You said it's not ADA compliant. How, if you could explain?
So, there is no ramp leading up to the park. Currently, we don't have a accessible portage on for a wheelchair person. None of the playground equipment currently is accessible for someone in a wheelchair. It is a drop-down onto the woodchips. There are no swings for them. There's, it's woodchips, so it's hard for them to be pushed along there. So we would have to have some resurfacing done. I don't have the exact code in front of me, otherwise I would give you much more details. Does that kind of answer your question? There's a lot of code. My husband wanted to be here tonight. He has mandatory training at the fire station. He goes through the ADA code daily for his job, so he would have more points on that. I do believe he sent an email to Diane and Vicki last night touching briefly on some of those points.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Pete Wyman. I'm at 1009 Badger Drive. I sent you the email. Apologize if you've seen it all before. Just trying to state my fears. My biggest concern always is drainage and water ending up in my basement. Once you disturb the flow of it, is now what's going to happen, I'm not sure. And I also see on the map that some regrading of my yard might need to take place. I don't know if I need to approve that, if it just happens, but I don't know. I have to look into that some more. So I'm a little worried about that. And then also, my next biggest concern is how close the path will be to my yard and my patio that I have there, and my back patio door, just easier access for somebody I don't know. I have little kids, so I'm always concerned about that. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Aaron Dobberstein. Address is 398 Wakeman Circle. I believe many of you or all of you got a phone call from my wife earlier. She was not able to make it. She's home with our kids, so I think she addressed a lot of her concerns. I believe the sidewalk along County Highway V makes a lot of sense. If I remember correctly, and we've been at previous meetings, if I remember correctly, one of the concerns was the residents from the apartment building having to go through or down Brewster across Badger to get to the park, and that the sidewalk going through the park was to help with that. But I would imagine that the sidewalk in County V would eliminate that concern for those residents at the new apartments, and certainly for the folks in Brookstone if they're looking to come to the park as well. Have a lot of the same concerns that Ashley pointed out as far as the safety. If it's not going to be maintained, especially in the winter, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood, a lot of kids going, using the sledding hill. And again, if that's not going to be shoveled or plowed or selted, that's a pretty big concern, especially if one of our, you know, one of our kids falls on the sidewalk or, heaven forbid, somebody else does, like you said, and then we're responsible for that. That is, that's a huge concern. But even, as well as having the easy access, like both Pete and Ashley pointed out, somebody parking their car, coming down the sidewalk, it's right up against our houses. There's so many small children, that's a huge concern. And the drainage that we've talked about, pointed out previously, how that's going to be taken care of as well. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. They are doing an excellent job and being good listeners. Thank you for coming, and someday maybe you'll be up here on the council, so. All right, anyone else? Seeing no one else, we will close public comment and move on. Get my computer back on. It likes to go to sleep. Okay. So, City Managers' Report. Steve, you're on.
I provided you with the October budget and the October capital budget reports, the treasures report for the general fund, and the treasures report for the utility fund. I don't know if you looked at the bottom or the last page of the, last, actually, page and a half, there was something new on there called work order projects. And it lists the utilities' work orders associated with certain projects. So you can see how much each of the utilities spent on one of the projects in this fiscal time period. So you can see that, consistent with what we anticipated, water was at $1.77 million for South Main Street. They were at $630,000, almost $631,000 for South, or for Mulberry. Sewer was, on South Main Street, was $1.33 million, and Mulberry Street was $532,000. Also see that the water tower repaint is on there for $403,000. So you get an idea of what the work orders were up to this time period for those projects. There'll be additional costs in there because we're still getting bills from the state and some of the finals for some of these projects, particularly Mulberry Street, which I got notice Monday that it was substantially complete. So they did have a pretty substantial punch list, but it is considered substantially complete. We're still trying to clean up a couple maintenance items, but the library parking lot should be totally complete now, except for some grading and some painting and signage. I think we had one sidewalk on Fremont, which I think might have got done today. Couple patches that we're hoping gets done this week. If they don't, we're going to try and film a cold patch and see if we can hold them over the winter until they can be patched. Thursday is the presentation to the EPA on our Lead Service Lateral Program, and they anticipate 400 other utilities watching our presentation, ranging from Maine to California.
Wow.
We are going to be the first small utility to do any presentation, so I'm imagining that this may take off. We may be asked to speak all over the United States now, huh?
No more pressure.
Will this be filmed so we could put it on?
No, it's a PowerPoint presentation. If you want, we can have it put on the agenda, and the guys can do the presentation here. The way it works for them is it's a, they submit a PowerPoint presentation, it goes on the website, and so everybody can see the presentation on their computer, and then they speak into a phone, so everyone's got their phone connection set up. And then at the end of the presentation, they can ask questions. Basically, it's a, it's kind of like radio, no faces, so if you have a radio face, you're in good shape.
Well, we all have a radio face. I can see that.
So it's a, it works out that way, that it should go pretty well. I don't think the nerves will get to them too bad. Based on the amount of time that we put into it, we had two weeks, but there's a lot of information there. I don't know that we'll hit the 25-minute cutoff. So I guess we're going to work on that hard. Other than that, I don't have anything. You have any questions?
I had a question on the work order projects. You don't have any labels for the columns there. Do they fall under the same?
Yes.
So you're talking balance, addition, subtractions, balance, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had.
I just want to use this opportunity to once again mention to the public that due to our financial concerns in the water department, that we will not be able to do as many water-related works this coming summer. We're going to have to delay those for another year so we can build up some reserve in the water utility. Would that be accurate way to put it?
Actually, it's to reduce some debt.
Okay. See, got it wrong. Reduce the debt, and then that will then help us for the next year to make it more, that we can do the projects we want to do.
It makes our bonds more attractive when we go to sell.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Better interest rate, and we maintain our rating. So we would, we would probably drop our rating this coming year because of the high level of debt and then adding some, but if we're able to pay that off, drop it down substantially in the next year, which would happen, we would be in good shape as far as continuing to keep a strong rating.
I know I personally was under the, I did not understand that we needed to kind of beg off a year. And I did mention to some people that we were going to do East, Westlake and Reed Street, and we won't be doing those two this coming summer.
No.
It'll be the following year.
Yeah, not this year, but last year, we, we went into the budget season that was listed in that order, but we went through and did the financial forecasts on debt. If you remember, we wrote that report.
Yep.
And we decided to take a debt holiday for 20, so we slid all the projects, all the utility projects back a year.
So-
And if we slide a utility project back a year, that generally means a street project to slid back a year.
So I apologize for miscommunicating. I was also under the misunderstanding and passed it on to other people. And so Lake, Westlake and Reed Street will not be done this summer. It'll be the following summer, 2000.
We haven't finalized on Reed Street yet, but the likelihood is that it would not be done.
Okay, all right. But definitely not Westlake until 2021.
Yeah, definitely not. That's a larger, more complete rebuild.
Yeah, and there's a lot of water issues on Westlake. It's an old street, and it just has a lot of work that has to be done, and it's going to cost a lot of money to do it. So my apologies for those of you who drive down the road and have to go bumpity bumpity bump down Lake Street. We will get there. We haven't forgotten you, and my apologies on that.
And also, it also, we go through that Pacer rating, and you have to hit a certain point where you then qualify to be in a, and so the street does have to get to a certain point before it hits that point where we do a rebuild. And so it'll probably take another year before it actually qualifies into the two in the Pacer rating.
Okay. So actually, they work together pretty well, these situations. It just won't make the people that use Lake Street happy.
Right.
And my-
It's a more heavily-used street than-
Yeah, and, you know, we wish we had the money to do it, but I don't think there's anybody in town who wants a tax increase to do Lake Street. I don't, I have not heard anyone who would like me to do that, so.
Actually, it wouldn't be a tax increase, it would be a rate increase.
A rate, yeah, a rate increase.
Another one, because what happens is, is you incorporate that, you build it in '20, then in '21 it gets incorporated into your rates.
Okay. Thank you. I'm so happy to have him there to clarify what I'm trying to say, so, but, okay. And anybody else have questions from the City Manager?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, let's move on. Number eight, acceptance of minutes of the Park Board of July 17th, 2019, and the Park Board for September 18th, 2019. And they will be accepted and placed on file. And number nine, council business. Would you read those names for us, please?
Certainly. We have before you tavern operator license applications for Kirsten Meyer, Paul Elst, Brian Wyatt, Troy Oestreicher, Mark McCassie, Brenna Miller, Amanda Classman, Miranda Onan, Kimberly Trinborn.
Okay. Do we have a motion to issue these licenses?
I move approval of those tavern operator licenses.
Second.
And a second, good. And would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, so all these people can go to work. All right? More money in the community. Yay. Okay. Discussion decision on confirmation of appointment of Cemetery Sexton. Are you going to be speaking to that?
Yes. Our current Cemetery Sexton, Bill Hartwig, has opted to retire at the beginning of the year, and so we went through the process of looking to fill that position. Rob has provided a short memo on what transpired, essentially that Greg McFarland has already been working with Bill for a couple of years now, and pretty extensively in the last several months. So when we posted internally, Greg applied, and they interviewed him and recommended him. So I am making the appointment of Greg McFarland as the Cemetery Sexton to be effective January 1st, 2020, as mentioned in the motion.
Okay, I need a motion, someone to make the motion.
I move adoption of motion- Okay.
1912-11.
1912-11.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any more discussion on this item? As you've mentioned, we've got the, we're very fortunate to have someone who's worked with us all these years too, and can kind of take over seamlessly, really.
Hopefully. I mean, Bill's worked for us for 24 years, so it's been quite a while. He's done a great job, and we appreciate everything he's done for us. But everyone has a time when they need to start stepping on. I think Bill's going to be 90 shortly.
That's amazing.
So it's good to have someone like Greg that could step in and knew what was going on at the cemetery and had, already had a handle on all the issues that are having to be dealt with in that situation.
Okay. Any other discussion or concerns? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Moving on to item C, discussion decision of the 2020 Clean Boats, Clean Water, Aquatic, Invasive Species Control Grant Program. That is on mouthful. Okay, let me get to that item on my thing. Here, there it is. We do have a motion on our, in front of us. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
Yep, I move adoption of motion 1912-12.
Okay.
Second.
We have the new one in front of us here.
And, yeah, oh, and we have the new one in front of us, and so you're moving the new one?
Yep, the new one.
Is that all right with yous? Yep, okay. So we have the new motion, and what is the pleasure of the council? Do you have any questions? We do have more than, we're, we have answers to questions in front of us here, and-
Yeah, we do this every year, and it seems like the town does a tremendous job of managing it and putting it together, thanks to the help of Patricia Cicero. So for us, this is not a lot more than actually just going out and asking for the, for the grant. And now that we have the right language in here, I, I think anything we do here will actually help protect the, protect the lake.
We're very fortunate to have you here to help us with this. And is anything you want to add, Steve?
Tricia writes the grant. She sends it to me as long as I get the right signature on it and sent out to the right place, we're in good shape.
Great, that's what we like. All right.
Can I ask one question? How successful do you think the program has been?
Thanks. You received a summary of the data and on the backside, you can see hours spent, boats inspected, people contacted. And this program is successful throughout the state because of the efforts that are being done to educate boaters. So more and more boaters that come to the launches are being talked to by the inspectors. And the inspectors find out that people understand the steps that they need to take to clean their boats and equipment off. So throughout the years of this program, we've been seeing more recognition of what needs to be done. So I think that's successful.
Has there been any quantification of slowing down the spread of invasive species?
Definitely. There is a research, I know specifically on zebra mussels, where there are a number of lakes in Wisconsin that have the right characteristics for zebra mussels. You have to have a certain amount of calcium in the water. And so they have identified lakes that are going to be susceptible to zebra mussel infestation. But they have seen slowing of new lakes being found with zebra mussels, I think in part due to this program.
Do we have them in?
Yes, unfortunately, we have zebra mussels in Rock Lake. And a number of other invasive species. But unfortunately, as you can see on, again, at the handout, the very bottom of the first page, basically I put that last paragraph in there because one of the questions the inspectors asked boaters is where they've used their boat in the last five days. That question is important because there's many species that can travel on the boats and be out of water for five days and still be viable. And there's a whole list of species that I looked at the lakes that they reported that they had been at in the last five days. And those are all the species that were in those lakes but are not yet in Rock Lake. So we're not only protecting Rock Lake with this program, but other lakes because of the species that we have that they don't want.
Good. Prevention is always better than fixing the problem.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions or comments? We definitely want to thank you for your work and your time and your expertise. And call the question.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you for coming. Okay, item D, discussion decision on the park fees for Wallace Park. We do have in front of us a motion for a change in the park fees at Wallace Park. Is there someone who'd like to make that motion?
I move adoption of motion 1912-13.
Second.
And you have in front of you a copy of the memo about the park fee increases and so forth, so.
And what I gathered out of this is this, we, we had no fees there before, so this is just adding them. So it's not like we're raising fees anywhere.
Trying to bringing them up to where they should be.
Right.
Yep. And any other discussion on council? Kind of cut and dried here. Call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Moving on to item E, the discussion decision on Fayetteville Park Walkway currently tabled. So first of all, do we want to remove it from the table? If so, I need a motion to do that.
I make a motion to remove it from the table.
Okay, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, now it is back on the council table here. So we need to decide what we want to do with Fayetteville Park, either that or table this again. And we do have in our packets several choices. We do have a motion that's been prepared. Now, this includes both the council recommendation and the park committee, park board recommendation. But we do have other choices. What is the pleasure of the council? We need to have a motion if we want to discuss this. What do you want to put on the table?
Can I clarify? I believe the motion just implements the park board recommendation for the sidewalk in Fayetteville.
Somewhere in this, it said that the.
In the memo, it gave you options, alternatives. But the way the motion came through the minutes in the parks board, I, I wrote that up.
All right.
So this is, if you vote no on this, you kill the one that goes through the sidewalk, through the park. Then, you know, we can bring back the other ones at some point in time. At this point, I don't know that it's, there's a lot of value in it because we'd have to figure out how we're going to pay for that. And that, that would have to be something you'd say, we, we want you to investigate and we'll come back and do that. Because it didn't get included in this year's budget. Doesn't mean that it couldn't be done. But we'd have to look at what sidewalk projects were available to us and then balance them from there.
Now, if we do not make a motion, that kills us. There's no motion because we don't make a motion. So that's one way to stop that if that's what we want to do.
Right.
I just want to express, first of all, it, it makes me sad that we can't be 100% behind the park board recommendation. But I'm kind of getting the feeling, we don't have any motion on the table yet or anything. But the feeling I'm hearing is that at least that people feel we should do the sidewalk one along the highway first before we do the one in the park. There's two different animals here. You're on the park board. Do you know what I'm trying to say? I feel, you know, I, I like to support the people on our boards and I like to support the time that they've put in. And I feel really bad that I can't be 100% behind it as it, as it's written here. But it's, you know, you've heard everything I've heard, so. Did you hear some things that you didn't hear at the park board?
No.
No.
Nope.
I have a question, that's from park board. Was there a discussion at the park board about the fact that we have work to do out there yet for handicap accessibility?
Some of that's been talked about now and they're in a process of putting a new strategic plan together for the park board. So hopefully that'll be completed and be able to presented to council soon.
Okay, and from what Steve just said, if we do want to do something with the other piece of this, the one on Highway V, then.
It'll be a different motion.
We would have to bring that back under a different, different motion, different agenda, different, the whole thing and so forth, and different money. The money that this would be, would be park board money, I mean parks money.
No, that's, that's not true.
Oh, I thought it was.
No, parks, it was, we borrowed it to do this project or projects in the parks, not, and. But it was borrowed from the general fund and the general fund incorporates all city projects. So if the council decides that they want to spend it on something else, they can spend it on something else. What, what we're going to look at is what was it borrowed for initially? And would the bondholders feel comfortable with us using it on this other option? And that's the question we have to ask. The money was originally borrowed, not specifically for this type, this project. But it was close enough that we were comfortable with going ahead with it now. So I don't think that shifting it to the other sidewalks would be a problem. But if you remember correctly, $20,000 doesn't even cover that one half.
Or it could be shifted to more ADA compliant things if we decided.
Yes, we're doing the asphalt pads anyways. Those are still on the, the agenda to complete the asphalt pads that would go in, that would get the people to those spots and make them accessible to them. That was part of this project anyways. So I, I don't think that would be a, out of the, we could make a larger improvement in there to those types of things. But I, I would really, really wait until we approve the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan before I made those types of decisions.
Okay.
And how long will that take?
It should be done in a couple of months. We have to approve it and then it has to be filed with the state and the state has to kind of sign off on it.
That's fine. It's not like we're going to do any projects coming here soon anyway, so there's no rush on that.
Yeah, no, it's pretty much set for the winter.
Right. So if we don't make a motion, it'll die. Or we can make an emotion and for approval and then either vote yes or no, and if you vote no, it would kill it.
But on the other hand, good, we just table it.
We don't have to.
Could, but.
We don't even have to make a motion. Right now, there's no motion. We, we, we don't have a motion on the floor. So.
The difference is, is, and I don't know that it's substantial, but if you vote no, I think the rules say we can't bring it back for a certain period of time.
Got you.
But if you don't make the motion or you table it, you can bring it back at any time.
But I just don't feel like we have all the ducks in the world.
Yeah, I don't either.
We, I, I think, you know, we have this handicap stuff, we have this, what you've got to send to the state. And I think we should send the thing back to the parks board and ask them to please continue working on this. And they will have heard what we've heard, the letters we've gotten, the feedback we've gotten. And then we'll revisit it.
But if we send it back to the parks board to keep working on it, they're going to keep working on this walkway. And it's a walkway that, that clearly the residents in the neighborhood do not support.
All right.
And that we, our druthers is to put it on Highway V. So I don't think we want to send the park walkway back to the parks board.
Last month, we did send it, asked to put it back on the parks.
Yeah, I know, but we don't want to send it again.
Right, so they did vote on it last week. So the minutes will be approved next month with their opinion on it. So after their next meeting in two weeks. So we'll see the minutes on, on that, what their approval was on it.
Just ask for a motion and see where it goes. And if we don't get a motion, then it's, it's done for now. But it doesn't put any restrictions on them to not, to not be able to bring it back if they decide they want to.
Technically, the restriction is, is a certain period of time, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And that time period wouldn't matter anyways because by the time we could do the project, it would be well past that time period.
Yeah.
Parliamentarian, no?
Yeah.
The parliamentarian is actually Mrs. Fritsch, the president of the council.
And she could ask you.
Yes, she certainly can.
You have any recommendations, Mr. Drescher?
You've discussed them. Any of the options discussed are appropriate. I do not know off the top of my head what the time limit is, if it is voted down, at what point it could come back. But I believe there's, there has to be some wiggle room in that statement anyway. If you substantially change the plan and the walkway was incorporated into another plan that showed sidewalks as well or something like that, I would assume there's a way to get it back in the council at the council's pleasure. Otherwise, I can look up an exact term of days that is required to wait, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with that at this moment.
I don't really recall that we have a rule that says if you vote it down, it can never come back in exactly the same form. There are certain things that you can't bring back, but I think we're talking zoning restrictions, that there's a rule on that. But I don't recall for, for regular type business that we have a rule that says it can't come back. But if we want to send to the parks board to have them continue to work on access issues having to do with ADA, you know, I could support doing that. I just don't want to send back to the parks board one more time to talk about the Fayetteville Park Walkway because I think that it would just be frustrating to, for the parks board to then grapple with it and then come back here and then we don't want to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, yeah, so, but if we don't do a motion tonight, that kills it, doesn't it?
It kind of just hangs in the limbo. There is no action on it. It's just not addressed.
Even if that it's, that we removed it from the table.
You removed it from the table right now, so it's an active item. But if you don't have a motion, you don't have action on it. So if they're, if everyone's just silent, nothing can happen. And now I lost my train of thought of where I was going prior to that.
Well, I think we haven't really voted yes or no on, on this. But I think we've heard a lot from different people. And what I have taken personally from what I've heard is that people are more concerned about the safety issue along Highway V and that they'd like us to deal with that before we deal with sidewalks in the park. Now it's, and so maybe someday in the future, we still will do this. But that right now, it's not the priority that we're hearing.
Well, I'm not sure we're hearing that anybody has a priority for the walkway along the rear lot lines of these people's properties.
Apparently, the parks board does. They voted on it twice.
Yeah, well, I think we can come up with different access points other than the one that's proposed.
And there are some concerns that were brought up tonight, like if you put in a sidewalk and then you don't maintain it. And then you have kids sliding down a hill that goes over a sidewalk, but you know, whoa, that could be dangerous.
And how it was initially presented to the parks board this summer was that there was funds available and they could afford this option. And that's how it was presented to them. It didn't come from the parks board per se. It came to the parks board that this was an option to get access and the funds were available. And it was brought to the, from the council and asked the parks board if they would buy into it. And they said if that was their only option on getting access, yeah, we looked at different options. The Tyrania wasn't, the V access wasn't on the table at the time because it was a more expensive. This option was presented to the bark board to sit if, and asked if they would support it because we had the funds for it. With discussion there, they are definitely in favor of along, putting it along V. discussion there, they are definitely in favor of along, putting it along V, it makes more sense, but it's not something we can do at the moment, because the funds aren't there.
Gotcha.
So, that was kind of how it all got started. It was more of a presentation to them, saying, could you buy into it? We could afford to do this with what's in the budget right now. That make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, we just don't want-
So, you're not offending anybody on the Parks Board, because it didn't really come from the Parks Board, it was, could we buy into that option?
That helps a little bit, because I really don't, I don't like-
It went the other way. It was a presentation to them that we had some money, and it was affordable to do that.
So, if we do nothing, it dies, do, and, and it just disappears, doesn't it? Okay.
And then maybe city administration can research how you can use those funds to help with Fable Park if you're not doing this pack, this park walkway, if there's other accessibility things that you can do with the funds.
Yeah.
Hey, that's why I was saying, it'd be good to see what the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan says.
So, we're basically directing you to look into that in, in replacement of this idea?
I think, but they're already dealing with it, so.
Okay. And then we will also look at how to get some money to do the sidewalk along the road, and bring that back to us when we find some money.
Can I ask, is there, we, in our list of projects and so on to do, where this, um, Long Tyrannina, County Trunk V sidewalk, where that is in the list, near the top bottom?
It's not on any list. Has, it, the only list it was in was in a memo that I wrote about five years ago, that listed the top priority sidewalks in the city, and that was one of them. The other one was Tyrannina out to Lake Mills Market, the other one was South Main Street out to St. Paul's, and then the other one was out to Brookstone, because, prior to the conversation, Brookstone has no access into the city other than now that bike trail that runs along American Way.
So, I guess to make this official, should the president ask for a motion?
Yes.
But not this motion? This motion?
Ask for a motion.
Ask for a motion.
I'll ask for a motion, you can figure out what the motion is. Okay, does someone want to make a motion on this topic? It isn't necessarily the one that's in our packet. Hmm. Going once, going twice, no motion. Okay, so this item dies for lack of a motion, and it will come back to the council when we have some other answers and some more money. So, and we do want to thank the Park Board for their time and consideration. We want to thank Rob Getz for his work on this piece, because I'm sure he spent some time on it.
Yep, and the citizens for talking to us.
Well, yes, yes, and being a part of the process, so that we heard from you before we did it, not after we did it. It's a lot nicer this way, so. So, it is dead in the water at this time. Right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Item F, Resolution 1952, fund transfer for the capital budget. Okay, who is taking that one? We have, okay, you, Betsy, are you, are-
I can speak on this.
You want to make, you want to-
Yeah, we need a motion.
Yeah, so, okay.
I'll move, I'll move Resolution 19 dash 52.
Second.
And a second, okay. And now you may speak to this.
All right. Uh, you have the resolution memo and an attachment. The attachment is a listing of the items that are being, um, that are projects in our capital budget that have not been completed, and we want to carry those funds forward to complete the projects in the future. So, what you have on that attachment is showing you the item, the budgeted amount, how much we've paid to date, and the estimated carry forward. It's an estimate because we know there will be more builds coming before the end of the year, and probably into January that will affect this, these, uh, as far as the project is in, at this year.
But the resolution, as it's written, will co- covers that.
Right, right. I haven't put, um, specific dollar amounts in there, because there, it's still, bills are still coming in. We still don't know exactly how much it'll be, but we want to carry forward everything that we can to complete these projects.
Any other questions for Betsy? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you for taking care of that for us. And let's go on to Resolution 1953. Okay.
I move adoption of Resolution 1953.
Second.
Okay. And I think that takes us back to you again.
All right.
Your big moments tonight here. Okay.
Uh, this resolution is just a little bit different. The funds are in our operations budget, not in our capital budget. This is a project that is being done at the library, and the, um, project is not complete. However, we are encumbered, we are obligated to, um, complete this project and pay the vendors.
We have a signed contract.
Gotcha.
So, we have fifteen thousand dollars that's in our operations budget that is earmarked for this project, that we want to carry forward and use in the future to complete this project.
This is for the one that we approved last meeting.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ready to vote, or do you have other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, sounds good. All right, moving right along here, let's go on to, if I find it on my thing here. Okay. Do, 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 do. Okay. Okay, I'm getting, we-
1954.
Fifty five, move, I missed it. It went right between fifty two, whatever. Okay, let me get this one up here. Resolution 1954, um, does someone want to make a motion?
I move adoption of Resolution 1954, fund transfers, vehicle lift 2019.
Second.
Okay. Now, is this yours, Steve?
Rob provided you with a memo on, uh, a piece of equipment that he'd like to add to his department. He does have a mechanic. They do have a mechanic's bay. Um, it was discussed at the time that, uh, we went, put in a lift into the building for this, that at some point in time, we'd actually buy the lift separate. Um, so this is that time. He's requesting, he's got additional funds left over in a couple areas, and, uh, that he lists for you, and he would like to use those funds to purchase the vehicle lift. Any questions?
Yeah, is the, is this, does the Parks Department have a separate maintenance from the general?
Yes.
Utilities?
They have their own mechanic, and they have a separate bay. They're actually side by side, but, um, yeah, they have separate bays.
And do they, can they help each other out, or is it, is there a wall built between-
No, you can walk from one to the other.
No, no, I don't mean that. I mean cooperation and help when they need it and so on.
They can. Um, most of the street department stuff is heavy equipment, and most of the park stuff is, is lighter equipment. The biggest thing might be a pickup truck. Most of it's, you know, lawn mowers and, and, um, that type of equipment. So, generally, what you'll see in the street department side is dump trucks, snowplow, you know, dump off blades, leaf vax. So, it, it's a substantially different type of work, but yeah, if they need help from each other, they can cross over. And generally, the, the Parks employees, you know, the, the amount of equipment and the amount of abuse that, that, um, streets' vehicles take, um, that gentleman is there almost all the time. In the wintertime, he does a lot of snow plowing and, and loading and stuff like that, but in, in the summertime, he's pretty much there. The Parks Department, you'll find their mechanic, um, out in the parks, um, quite a bit, working on other types of activities, um, including, you know, putting in piers and, um, taking care of the lawns and that type of stuff. So, yeah, it, it's not, it's not the same type of work.
And the, the money in this, that this is already budgeted?
Yes.
This is just-
Moving it from what's, it is budgeted into a category where he wants to spend it at now.
Sounds like inappropriate activity. So, if there's no other discussion, we could call the roll. Go ahead.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
I like how cleanly we do this stuff. We just do our little thing and we move it from here to there, so we can spend it and put it where it's supposed to go. I like that. It's the way it should be done. All right, so, let me go on. Okay, 1955, let's go on here. Do, 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 do. Now, we have a motion, a resolution, I should say. Let me get rid of this. Oops, took care of everything here. All right, um, do I have a motion for, to adopt 1955, the resolution?
I move adoption of Resolution 1955, authorizing third reduction of financial guarantee, Crestview Meadows subdivision.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Now, we can discuss this. Someone want to speak to this one?
Um, yeah, I prepared a short memo for you. Um, Loose Homes is substantially completed with, um, the Crestview Meadows development. Um, Corey O'Donnell, their representative, has requested a full, um, release of the escrowed funds that are being held, uh, under Lake Mills ordinance. Um, we are, because there is work to be completed, specifically sidewalk work, we are required to retain a minimum of fifteen percent of the original amount of the, um, uh, escrowed funds, the, uh, to ensure that the remaining work is completed. Uh, that is the crux of my memo, uh, that is the, the crux of the motion in front of you. If you have any questions specifically, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Do you have signed lien waivers?
Um, no, we don't, but I'm, uh, we do up until this point, I haven't investigated that. What I've usually done is gotten, collected everything before the, uh, funds are actually returned. And they've been great to work with, there hasn't been an issue.
It's a pretty limited development, too.
Right. Where is this?
Uh, the, the north and east or west side of Brookstone, Crestview Meadows, by the New Hope Church.
Real Hope.
Real Hope, excuse me.
Yeah, Real Hope sold off three acres along Crestview Drive and Brookstone Drive, and they subdivided off, I think, seven or eight lots along those two streets, actually, and I think there's a third street, too. Um, but all the public improvements were there except for sidewalks, and then they had to run the water and sewer laterals from the existing water and sewer mains to the lots. So, uh, some street cuts, some curb cuts.
So, this resolution is written in, um, along with our zoning and our rules that we do, which-
Yes, ma'am.
It falls the subdivision code.
Yes, thank you. And, um, and we have a motion and a second. Does anybody else have any other questions? Basically, this is how it is, and we're doing this so we can let them know how it is.
The important thing here is that the, um, observing engineers that have been contracted by the city did observe and did report back that the, and you have a letter to that effect, um, that the improvements that have been completed are, um, suitable, are, uh, ready for, um, use, and Brandon, the, the engineer from Strand, did specifically kind of echo that thought, that some funds should be retained for the completion of the sidewalk. And the sidewalk hasn't been completed just because it's finishing work. They're not looking to damage sidewalk that's brand new. They still have, um, approaches and driveways to put into the, the houses, and, uh, the, the project itself isn't complete. The public improvements of the project are complete substantially. So, that's where you sit.
So, it's written the way it should be written, and it does what we need it to do.
I believe so.
On this resolution, we're not accepting the public improvements then, okay?
No, there's specific action that's typically taken for that as well. This is merely based on the engineer's recommendation that we no longer have to retain funds.
Okay, so before we accept the, the actual public improvements, um, we'll have to have signed lien waivers on file, and, uh, so with that being the stipulation, I'm fine with this.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, call the roll, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. Moving on to Item J, Resolution 1956. Um, let's go to, oh, pardon me, I got fingered on my little finger here. Okay. And what were you saying?
Oh, no, I just touched it, and my screen went really big, so I couldn't see everything.
I'm glad to hear somebody else has that problem. I love to have that problem. Okay, we have here Resolution 1956, City Council, Opposition to State of Wisconsin, two nine, 2019 Senate Bill 560. Uh, Steve, you want to give us just a synopsis of why, why we have this in front of us?
Um, Senate Bill 560 is a proposal to try and limit the use of TID.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, this Senator Dewey Struble has proposed every possible amendment to the TID law, from abolishing it to trying to curb it in every form possible. At this point in time, what he's done is, if you don't have a unanimous motion at the, um, Joint Review Board to, um, amend the boundaries of a TID, it can't pass. Just about every Joint Review Board in the state, the school district votes against it. Um, so, that would e- essentially eliminate any amendments to a TID. We have historically amended TIDS here on a regular basis. Um, we've amended TID 2, TID 4, we're about to amend TID 5, we've, um, even 6. Um, so, from that standpoint, it's a, it's an important tool that the city needs to be able to have available to it, so we want to express our opposition to that change. I think there's another slight change in there, Dan, that-
Yeah, it's regarding the ability, um, excuse me, let, let me pull up the motion. Um, it's regarding the ability of the municipality to pay out grants to, um, a person in, that's, that's an owner or a- an owner or a developer or someone that has an interest in a property in a TID district making improvements. The city has no cap on the amount of grant money it could award that, that project in the event that it's an appropriate project for TID funds. The SBE 560 also introduces a cap on that and limits the amount to 20% of the total project costs of a TID. There are, there's a way around that. If the developer basically signs a personal guarantee that they'll be on the hook for repayment of funds, et cetera, in the event that awarded grant money is not used appropriately or is not used because the project doesn't go through or for whatever reason. This is seen by the League of Municipalities and many other municipalities as a restraint on the ability to entice developers and redevelopment of blighted or undesirable property, property that wouldn't be redeveloped without the opportunity of grant funds.
Sort of like the grant that we did in order to get the corner redeveloped into Walgreens.
Exactly.
Trying to curb our ability to?
So you had experience with that. How much was that grant compared to the total cost of the TID at that point? I would assume that it was a very substantial grant for the amount of infrastructural work that was done.
And we took the appropriate steps to safeguard us and the TID funds. We had all those things in place. It's like this legislator doesn't believe the cities know what they're doing.
It's, the cap is the troubling part. You're absolutely correct. And it's, it's a distrust in the system that's in place right now. This is a drastic change to the state's TID law or proposed change to the state's TID law right now. And the League of Municipalities, who we are a member of, has absolutely expressed its opposition to this bill as well.
Yeah, and then the other problem is, is you can create a TID without a unanimous vote. But in order to amend it, now he wants it to be a unanimous vote to amend.
And part of TID law is that you are afforded a certain number of amendments depending on circumstances. So, yes.
I'm going to interject here and ask if there's someone who would like to make a motion for Resolution 1956 to approve?
I move adoption of Resolution, Resolution 1956.
Second?
Second. I guess it should also be stated that Mr. Foster is the individual that brought this to our attention.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Good, thank you for doing it that way. I hadn't thought of doing it this way. So we have a motion and a second. We can continue any discussion. But I think what you've explained has been very helpful and I think the public will find it interesting.
I looked at it and I just saw that it would hamstring us if it came down to not knowing exactly what we wanted to have in a TID. You know, we would have no option to ever amend that TID and we would end up having to create new TIDS. And it would just be
Very crazy.
A big mess.
That's the practical aspect of it. It would completely hamstring municipalities in that second step, in amendment.
The second step, exactly.
It, it wouldn't happen. It's very low likelihood that it would happen.
Yeah. I don't see this ever passing in the Senate, but there's no harm in us expressing our concerns with it.
Better to say something now than have it go through and then say, well, wait a minute. We didn't think you were serious.
Right.
There's always somebody who's coming up with something.
Will this go to?
Direct to whom you want? I assume the governor.
We historically have done Scott Fitzgerald and Barb Dietrich are local reps.
Our representatives, yep.
And then the governor.
Yep.
Generally, who we send it to.
Should a copy go to the author of the bill?
Uh, we, we express our concern to our representatives who represent us. I don't.
It isn't normal to do that.
No, it is not normal to do that. And I don't know that it would, it would provide any benefit.
Yeah.
Mr. Strobel has been down this road multiple times, I'm sure. That's kind of like what Mike said. I, my initial reaction is, well, the vast majority of his party is going to vote against this. So I don't see it passing. But it's good to at least let your legislators know what they think.
Right, and how important it is that it doesn't pass. Because it really would be very detrimental to Lake Mills.
I look at it the same, the same way as we look at getting the citizens' input here. If we don't have their input, we can act unilaterally and we may not be doing things in the best interest of the folks that we support. So it's what we're trying to do. Make sure we can keep our stuff moving along without hiccups and let our legislators know that we don't think what is being put in front of them is appropriate for us.
Or just good for business, period.
Yep.
Have to take that sign, sign down that says Wisconsin's open to business.
Yeah, I, I could see developers not wanting to do anything inside of a TID if they can't get grant money for it. I, I just, it would stifle growth inside the TIDS.
Right, and that would be bad for?
Wisconsin's constitutionally so restricted as far as economic development, TID is it.
Yeah.
You get a few grants at the state level, but it's, if you compare us to other states, we're almost, have no tools at all. Our toolbox is TID.
And it's a great tool for us to use. And no reason to pull our, our 10-millimeter wrench out of there and throw it away. And that's exactly what they're doing.
Would it be a benefit to send it to the League of Municipalities?
No, I can do that. I, I've already communicated with them on this topic, but I'm happy to send it.
And let them know then they have that tool in their bucket, too. You never know, they might be really happy to see what we did. Okay, how about calling the question on this? Okay, yep, call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, let's go to Item K, Resolution 1957. Let's go to that little bit here. Okay, whoa, my computer didn't go where I wanted it to go. It's my fault. Okay. We have in front of us Resolution 1957, City Manager Compensation. Do we want this read before we make a motion? Or should we make a motion?
Let's make a motion.
Okay, motion, please.
So move?
Moving Resolution 1957, City Manager Compensation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do we want it read or not? Not necessary? It is online.
It's online.
Okay. And so, any discussion on this item?
It's all in accordance with the motion, with the budget that we adopted?
Yep.
Yep, no change from the budget.
Okay. Call the roll? Yes, yep, call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
And that moves us to Item 10, Recommendations for Future Agendas. So this is the first meeting in December. We have another meeting in two weeks, the 17th. What kinds of things are we looking at being on that one?
We, at this point, have nothing. And we're trying to have nothing.
Oh, okay. Well, and if we have nothing, then we will cancel the meeting. But if we do, we will have a meeting, which we could have. It's a whole week before Christmas. It's not like we're keeping everybody from going to Christmas activities. But nothing?
The only thing that looks like it'll be moving forward is the preliminary plat for the, called Tyranina Point.
Where's that?
It's the one that we've been looking at on Mudlight Road.
Oh, okay, yep.
Been calling it the Grand Mar subdivision. It's got a technical name now. They submitted their preliminary plat. It'll be going to plan commission next week.
Okay.
But we didn't want to push it to, you know, come to the 17th meeting, too, because staff has to go through, you get one meeting and then you got to get to the next meeting. So they can get their preliminary plat done. Then they can file their, their final plat and their rezoning. And they, they'll still have plenty of time to be able to be prepared for the summer work.
Doesn't the preliminary plat also have to go to the Public Works Board?
Does the preliminary plat? I thought the final plat, because there's no construction plans with it. They may, they may have to.
Well, it's the layout of the roads. You can't change the roads once you've done the preliminary plat.
I, we do have it on the Public Works Board agenda.
So then it wouldn't be able to get to the council until January, anyway.
Okay. So we will then adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.